Bring this meeting to a start. I'd like to open tonight's meeting, announcing that we are recorded, being shown live and recorded. You can find us on YouTube. We have all members present, so all votes will be just taken verbally. Ready to open?
Your show.
All right. Before we start, I'd like us to all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please remain standing.
Hi.
Hail to the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America, in whose land for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose role, liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, calling to mind our veterans, past and present, within the United States and all over the world. Thank you. All right. Our first order of business tonight is to open the Affordable Housing Trust meeting.
You have to open it as a separate meeting.
As a separate meeting, okay. So we're going to open that now. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, excellent. Yay, we're open. All right, so we are...
Recording, right? Mentioned that it is being recorded.
It is being recorded, yes. Thank you. So Cody, would you lead us through?
Sure. So the Select Board acts as the Affordable Housing Trust. You may recall, a couple of months ago, the board had approved a contract with Leonardo Rey Architects to do the homebuyer assistance program. We've done this a couple of times in the past. So he has been working behind the scenes to develop the program guidelines to offer that first-time homebuyer assistance program. In your packet was the breakdown of what that would look like. Essentially, it would be offering grants or assistance up to $195,000 for up to two home purchases. It would be for essentially two- or three-bedroom homes. There's all of the income guidelines in here. It goes based on 80% of the area median income. So a family, a household of three could make up to $86,100. A household of four could make up to $95,650. There's some market data in here. In addition to the $195,000 grants to buy down each of these homes, the program would fund the home inspections, up to $1,000 per home. And also, if there were some repairs with the purchase of the home, up to $20,000 for each for the home purchase. So it's a great program. We hope to get it out and start marketing it. And then there'll be a lottery system that goes in place. And then essentially, what happens is a permanent deed restriction goes on the home, so it's affordable in perpetuity.
Excellent.
So, you know, they can sell the home in the future. They contact us, and there's a calculation essentially that we do. It sets the maximum that they can sell the home at. And then that also counts towards our subsidized housing inventory, which we want to try to get to that 10% and stay at that 10%.
I see that they also put in some calculations for us to have an idea of what the median house income and how this 190, up to $195,000 would work for the two individuals or two families that enter into a purchase and sale agreement.
Yes, yeah. And ideally, we would get this out, do advertising over the next 60 days or so, and then assist potential buyers throughout the spring with hopefully closing dates in, you know, late spring, early summer. It's a great, yeah, it's a great program.
Anyone on the board have any specific questions? Okay, Mr. O'Neil.
So Cody, the inventory sale price, $492, $487. These aren't, these aren't specific homes?
No.
That they've, that they've found now, right? This is basically an estimate for the type of, or an estimated value of the two- and three-bedroom?
Exactly. He looked at historical sales data over the past two years, I believe is what it was.
So the only question I had would, if I, say I owned a single-family home and I was moving to Tucson, and my market value was going to be, say, $500,000. Would the people, do you know if they'd be able to take a tax credit for the reduction in the value if they got into this program and sold the house using this program?
I'm not sure, but I can certainly look into that.
I'd be interested to see, even if it were a little bit higher than that, say $550, $560, they might be able to take the tax credit, save some time instead of putting it on the market, paying the broker fees and everything else that goes along with the sale. If you wouldn't mind finding that out for me.
Absolutely.
Just looking at this inventory sale price, these are not prices I've seen recently on any home. Also, there was a...
Typo?
Typo.
F R one two.
Yeah. Could it be the...
Next steps.
Could it be the net...
Page 10 of our 1.4 funding.
Next to the...
Next to where?
Next to the last dot.
Can say that word on air?
No, I don't think so, but we'll just point it out to Cody. Do you see it on page 10?
Yes, we will make sure that's, yep, we'll make sure that's all set.
All right.
So I would need the board to vote to approve the program guidelines for the homebuyer assistance program.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
It has passed. And now I will close.
There's one more, we have one more.
Oh, so sorry.
The local initiative program application.
Oh, the application.
So this is just, in order for us to essentially get credit from the state for units such as these, we have to apply to the state under the local initiative program. So you can see the, essentially, the application in the, in the packet. We've done this in the past. We looked at our current status, and we just figured it was best to update things with the updated program guidelines. And so we would just ask that the board vote to approve the local initiative program application.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor? Those two are all set. All right. All right, at 6:37, we will close that portion of our meeting and read...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, heading to our regular agenda, new business. We have the Youth Commission appointment. So I'm going to invite Dolores Joseph, our Youth Commissioner, up to introduce us to
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Select Board members. Thank you for having us tonight. I would like to introduce Mary Ellen Bonnie Savage. She would like to be part of the Youth Commission and is here tonight. So I'm going to introduce you to Mary Ellen Bonnie Savage.
Shall we call you Bonnie? Is that the plan?
That's what I go by, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, welcome, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Could you just, you've given us plenty of information for the audience. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure, I am new to town, so I want to get involved with the community. I work for the county as a mental health therapist, and I'm passionate about this area, and hence why I want to volunteer in the youth advocacy.
Thank you. I'm also pleased that you attended a meeting in advance, so you know what you're getting into. You can go in blindly. Anyone have any questions for Bonnie?
No, welcome aboard.
Very nice, well-suited.
All right. All in...
Motion to appoint.
Thank you. Motion to appoint made by Mr. Mickelson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Bonnie, just so that you know, you'll get a letter from our town clerk to come in and be sworn in and all of that stuff. All right. Next on our agenda, we have a letter in our packet from the Paidnarram Business Association. Everyone should be familiar with this. This is their request to have the holiday lights installed, running approximately from November 23rd to January 31st. And they have a whole description within on page 15, telling us how many lampposts and all of that, which I'll segue into. The buoy tree, which is not included in this, however, I'd like to wrap it in with it because the buoy tree will be created in the next month, and then it will be, I think their lighting is scheduled for December 5th, I believe. So I'd like us all to support all of these initiatives for the Paidnarram Business Community, Business Association.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Mickelson.
A second now, only if they do a better video, then they, they have to upgrade their video.
I don't know. That upgraded video, and I hope everybody knows exactly what he's talking about. Those two little twins, so cute to capture Santa. They, that was adorable.
Well, that and the elves putting up the lights, too.
The elves, all the elves putting up the light.
They're going to have to step up.
They're going to step up? All right, well, it's conditional approval.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Are we approving the lights and the buoy?
I'd like us to, therefore, there's no reason for them to come back.
Motion to approve both, yeah.
Did the motion have both in it?
No, it didn't, well, the motion will be.
Okay, Mr. Mickelson.
Both the lights in the, in the village and the buoy.
Lighting of the buoy tree. Seconded by Mr. McDonald, still with that condition, I would assume. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We'll let them know that they're all set. All right.
Things are going well so far.
Moving right along. Mike Corville to the mic.
Captain.
This is an exciting announcement.
Yes, good evening, Mike Corville, MIS Director. We are finally changing the town's domain, the public-facing internet address for the town. It's been town.dartmouth.m-a.us since May of 1998. We're going to change that to dartmouthma.gov. The transition is going to start to occur the week of November 17th, coming up in a couple of weeks. The big heavy lift for this is internal for you and the public. It's going to be the email addresses for the town is going to change to dartmouthma.gov, and the website is also going to change. Okay? Internally, the big lift internally is the financial system in Town Hall has to be completely redeployed. So it's like we're installing the system new. The way the system runs is it's web-based, and in order to capture all the places where .us exists, we want to make sure .gov is replaced. So the system will be down for an entire day for that transition to happen. In the meantime, we can start to update the emails, the website, a couple of days before that. So you'll start to see changes in place. We're going to post this on the town website. Hopefully, Dartmouth Week can get this out. You know, it'll be out in the town sign out front, so we're going to put it in as many places as we can, reach as many people. I don't have access to the town Facebook page, but we'll make sure that the right person gets that out. And so that's exciting. So that'll happen in November. Right after that, in December, we're going to do the Police Department. So the Police Department is going to change from dartmouthpd.org to dartmouthpolice.gov. The third week of December, that's going to happen. This was all possible, we applied for a grant at the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to do this work. The grant was awarded, we received a grant for this, and so now we're going to actually get this done. So, exciting.
Whenever I have to give out my email address, it's a tongue-twister to get through. Is it town or is it Dartmouth? Is it, yeah, so, thank you. And this is the format that most municipalities are using.
Correct. This is guidance from the state. If you go to this mass.gov website, they have a whole bunch of literature on how to go about doing this, so we just, you know, fell in line with what they're recommending for cities and towns across the state, so.
Thank you. And also, I have complete faith in you finding all the .us and keeping us out of trouble because your cybersecurity bulletins and training have been wonderful.
So the biggest thing, so into, one more, one more point I want to make is, this is going to be very important for the departments in town to flush out all the places that they have their current email address. And many offices have cloud-based applications. A good example is Viewpoint, the permitting software that we have in all the departments. We want to make sure they get in those systems and change their email addresses. That's going to be important. The .us is going to remain in place for a period of time, so everybody that has a .us email will continue to receive email, I'm thinking, Cody, in the last, through the fiscal year, you know, through a fiscal year to allow that to happen. Any outbound emails, new emails that you create or replies that you, you know, want to reply to those emails that came in under .us, all outbound email is going to come out of the .gov email address, so. Just of note.
Thank you.
Excuse me, what was the grant money, how, how much was that?
It was $20,900. And so half of that for the town and half of that for the police migration.
All right.
Yep.
If I may, too.
Yes.
I just want to acknowledge Mike for all of his hard work, too. It sounds like a simple thing, hey, just change the domain to .gov. It's really not, and Mike and I met, and, you know, he really explained all the nuances to it and the things that I'd never even thought of. So I just, you know, publicly want to acknowledge you, Mike, for all the hard work.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work, and we appreciate it.
Reading the memo that came with it hurt my head. So I can't imagine being the person that had to create all of those pieces. It's a domino effect of where our email addresses are and where our domain is. So thank you very much.
Great job. Mike, quick question.
Sure.
With all the links out there, it must drive you absolutely nuts after this change. Will there be a transition period where maybe a landing page comes up when they click on old link, or will it just die out after?
So that'll happen for the website. What'll happen is if somebody, you know, has a bookmark or favorite already set up in their browser, it will redirect the US to the .gov website. My advice is to go in there and change it at some point. So what I'll do is I'll include the selectmen on some of the emails that I'm going to send to the employees on tips and tricks, things you should be looking at from all the way down to the user level, because it does affect users in this town. They have access to bank information, if you're in the collector's office. All the land-based departments have access to Viewpoint. The town clerk has access to Division of Local Services, DLS Gateway has to be changed. So there's a lot to this. So on the surface, you know, when I started many, many, many years ago, it was just email and the website. Now it's so much more. So I am putting out that there are going to be things we miss. We just address them as they, they come up, but we want to get the big ones, so.
I know through the school department, they, there's a link that they can come in to do some payments through, I think, you know, their after-school programs, there's school fees, but it comes to the same thing.
Yep.
So will the parents in the school department be getting notified?
That's invoice cloud, right? That's, is that how they...
That domain won't change.
That domain won't change.
Change, that won't change. That's independent. Yeah, that's independent from what we're doing.
All right.
Yep.
Up, Dave?
Cody, question? Can we use the lodge electronic signs out on the streets to publish this as well?
Those are by the police department, but they can.
Yeah, we can, I can talk to the chief to see if it's something that he determines.
Maybe for a week or so. They're pretty effective.
We'll certainly get it out on this sign sooner than later.
Those are pretty effective.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that.
Especially the police don't want to do it when they change theirs, for sure. So when should we start?
So around, I would say, November 18, 19, you should start seeing, you may not see it right away, the only way you're, you're really going to see it is if you send an email to yourself to see where that email address is coming from. Because most of the time, it's your English name. It's Sean McDonald. You know, you're not seeing what the actual email address is. So the only way, or if you hover over it, you'll see what it is. But you should expect to start seeing a transition between 18, 19, November.
All right. We will look for more emails from you.
Yes.
Okay.
Stay tuned.
Thank you so much, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, Mike.
Captain.
Now, we have another mic. May I invite up our Veterans Service Officer up to tell us about what he's been up to and some upcoming events?
How we doing? You'll have to excuse me, I had some dental work done after work today, so the left side of my face is still a bit numb. I'm going to try and drive through this.
I sound like that all the time, don't worry about it.
Okay, thank you for your time today. Just for a little bit of an update from my office, so my office continues to work with the families, veterans and veterans of Dartmouth, to keep them informed of all the benefits and how they've been restructured, any of the entitlement service-connected concerns and issues. Also, informing the veterans that are eligible of the articles that were passed by the town early this year for the tax abatement. Continuing to conduct outreach to ensure that all veterans have access to the veterans' benefits. I'm working with the Military Order of the Purple Heart to proclaim Dartmouth a Purple Heart community. I don't know if you've seen the packet that I've sent out with some of the flags and stuff like that. I'm just hoping for permission to pursue it. And if you are willing to sign it, there are two there. There's one for a community and a town. My opinion is that community sounds a little bit more inclusive and sounds a little bit more Dartmoughy, if you want to. So if you care to sign that, that would be fantastic, just do not date it. It would be dated the date of the service, and with the holidays coming up, it's looking like that would be sometime in January.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Now, there is a price for the signs and the flags and such, and if you've had time to go through the entirety of my packet, I put in a little bit of a, of a, an idea that I have for the front of Town Hall, that I'm hoping to use some of the extra funding that we have here in the town. So what I'm looking to do is to replace the flagpoles in the front, also add another eight flagpoles, six service flagpoles, one Purple Heart and one Gold Star. Now, I wasn't sure I was going to be able to pitch this idea tonight, so I didn't want to put the picture in your, your packet, but I have this, if I may approach.
I love the coloring, you've got the sky behind it, perfect.
So that's not, that was real.
Yeah, this is real, yeah.
So I just, I added that for, you know, just a picture, additional flags representing all the services, Gold Star families and Purple Hearts. As I wrote, I don't only think that is a testament to the town, but it also serves as a vision for those who may, may want to join, you know? Those, you know, young folks are influenced by those around them and, and what they see. So I think that, I think that would be a very nice added addition to the Town Hall. Granted, this is just the beginning stages. I have no idea about, you know, working with DPW, having put in or anything like that. I do have the, the cost of the poles, the hurricane, yeah, the hurricane poles. So that would be the price for the poles. I haven't done any other pricings, again, this was, Cody came to my office and we were talking, and all of a sudden, boof, this came out, so.
Does it, I certainly understand putting it at the Town Hall. What are the, what are the flags that you have down at the Council on Aging?
Just a single flag. So I had thought about doing that, but it was on a much smaller scale with telescoping flagpoles, that could go up and down, you know, but taking a big bite off the apple. Taking a big swing, so.
Currently, in front of the Town Hall, we have the POW flag.
Correct. It's a town flag, POW flag as well as, yep.
Yeah.
But if you look, there's, there's plenty of room.
Should be actually adding one more pole.
Yeah, there should be, there should be six flags, just picture six more flagpoles on either side. Or...
It's not like we don't have the room.
Yeah.
Yes.
What is the nighttime policy of the flags?
On town or federal property, it would have to be lit, which it currently is.
So these will all be lit, so therefore they can stay up 24/7?
Correct, the one down at the police station, the one down, there's one here at Town Hall, the one at the Council on Aging. And then the other ones around town, they're not on town property.
Which I'm just going to piggyback. Last year, when we had the scout troop come in and they were concerned about the flagpole at St. Mary's Cemetery, and I spoke to the Superintendent of the Seminary, and what you just stated is, is accurate. It does not have to be lit. It's a preference, but we cannot mandate it. So I just wanted to follow up on that.
Because it's private property?
Mm-hmm. It's not a federal or government building. So with my tail between my legs, I, I'm back home.
Yeah, yeah, I had to do that as well. So I also wanted to bring up the funds that are brought into Dartmouth through the veterans as far as compensation, not only for the veterans, but their family members. It's divided into two area codes, and if you, you can see, I don't need to read it out loud, if you'd like me to, I can, but you can see it's quite a bit of, quite a bit of money that's coming in to the residents of Dartmouth.
So is this within one year?
Yes. Actually went down, too, from last year.
That's amazing.
Lot of money.
That's fabulous. And that includes VA compensation, VA pensions.
Yeah.
DIC?
DIC. So VA compensation is for veterans receiving compensation based on a service-connected disability.
Okay.
The VA pension is a needs-based, income-driven program, provides supplemental income to eligible wartime veterans and their surviving spouses. The DIC, the death, oh, excuse me, the indemnity and indemnity compensation, try and say that three times fast. So that is for the folks who, a veteran was 100% service-connected, he passed away, his wife is entitled to the surviving benefits for the remainder of her life. She's also entitled to all the benefits that he had, being Champ VA benefits, the annuity, the abatements, all of that. Then there's the death pension. So after a veteran's death, the surviving spouse or the children, they may be eligible. Again, a lot of these, so the DIC, it's a guarantee, it's a one form, you send it in. A lot of these other ones are income-driven, need-based, you have to meet their criteria and things like that. So if you're on a, you know, single income and you're a widow of a veteran and social security is your only income, you're probably eligible for the veteran's pension. So that would be, where's the camera? Call my office.
The camera is right on you, is right on you. Across the town, we have currently 531 veterans, and the average payment across the town...
Oh, no, 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 no. So there are over 2,200 veterans in Dartmouth.
This is just the ones that are...
This is just the ones, yeah.
Under this compensation?
So the total number of veterans receiving benefits in, in North Dartmouth is 200, or excuse me, it's 305 widows and spouses. Total number in South Dartmouth, yeah, South Dartmouth is 226.
Question? Any idea what it was when they first got here, Matt, in those numbers?
Lot lower.
Yeah.
They've increased substantially because of the cost of living and...
How about the work that you did, finding veterans?
Yeah, the number of veterans, yeah. When I, I started, it was probably roughly 30. I have about a month that I was giving benefits to during COVID, it was about 80. Now it's about 52, 53 per month. Now that's just for Chapter 115, that's not VA benefits.
Right. Thank you. Nice going.
But again, to the public at home, if you've had any connection with the service.
Yeah, get, call me. There's a lot of, yeah.
There's a lot of nuances to.
All the stuff I'm saying, there, you know, one simple question or one simple no, you know, yeah, you won't be eligible for it. So like, your neighbor, who you think you're exactly alike, might be getting a certain amount, but there's something different, you know?
Yep. But they should call to find out.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And especially if their neighbor next door gets, doesn't get anything, their situation may be different.
And they know that their neighbor being a veteran.
And don't say, well, they did this, I'm the same, and I'm not gonna get anything.
Absolutely. It can be frustrating. VA is set up to give up. You send them all this paperwork, you think you've done it right, and then they send you something back, so.
So we have a lot to digest in front of us, Matt, so just hang on a second as I.
Maybe I should have led with how much money is coming in and then asked for a little bit of money?
Yeah, I saw that. That's fine. That's fine. So if we go full-tilt on the service flag, six service flags, one Purple Heart, one Gold Star.
Now, this is just the flag poles.
Just the flag poles.
Installation, not the flag. I'll take care of the flags.
Just the poles, twelve thousand.
If you buy the poles, I'll buy the flags. How about that?
So I think if the board is receptive to the idea, what would be good, which is to approve the concept, and then we can work behind the scenes on funding and making sure that everyone else is on board. But we wanted to make sure the board was receptive to the idea.
And I've seen in other communities that they have, you know, smaller monuments with the flags and everything like that. But again, I just think it would look, would look really nice in front of Town Hall. We have the space. We could groom the trees around.
All right, so I'm gonna go.
Tree committee first.
Yes. I'm gonna go back first to talk about the Purple Heart community.
Yes.
Because that's the piece that if we go in that direction and include the Purple Heart, then we need to know, do we pursue this Purple Heart community?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. McDonald.
Make a motion that we pursue the military order of Purple Heart, Purple Heart Community proclamation.
Second.
And program.
All in favor? Any questions on that? All in favor? Excellent. So that is approved?
Thank you.
So we will pursue that.
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve and support the idea of the flag arcade in front of Town Hall.
I like that.
You so much. Thank you.
I have a motion, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Questions on that?
Cody, is there a way to get a, can we have somebody put the flags on this page so we could see what it would actually look like?
Yeah, we can run it through some sort of AI and.
So I attempted to do that. I'm not very savvy, so I asked and I.
Might be able to help you with it.
Yeah. So I did the picture of all the flags, if you've noticed that, and I was trying to, you know, use your imagination.
As you, as you were talking, I just drew a semi-circle above the flags so that it, instead of, I know military like concise and straight order, but this is Dartmouth. We're a little bit different, you know, a semi-circle, similar to that, and two purposes. Number one, it would look great. And number two, it would probably not draw the ire of the tree planting committee.
And it leaves space for maybe the advisory, my advisory board to put a little monument in front of.
Exactly.
All right.
Good. Thank you so much, sir.
There's plenty of room for it, so, as you said.
Did we vote on it?
So we've already, we've developed a design.
That was great. Yeah, thank you, sir. I was actually gonna email Cody and see if I should actually talk about this, so, thank you.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, we'll definitely have to talk to.
And we could talk to Gary.
I mean, the, the tree group has done a lot, looking at what's underneath, so I think that this will be not so much of a heavy lift.
And we can, and we can tweak Gary's Town Wallet for this, for the funding of this.
One thing that I might want to consider is the electrical. When we had the ceremony out there, some of the electricals need a repair out there.
Okay.
Some of the, it's all old fixtures, and I think that.
There'll be holes in the ground. That makes a perfect time to do it.
Fix it then.
And to do those LED lights.
Necessary lighting.
Yeah.
All right, so just, just to confirm, we have a motion and a second on the, in front of us, and I want to make sure, because neither of us can remember if we voted. So all in favor of pursuing this flag arc?
Just pursuing.
Pursuing it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, excellent.
One more thing, if you don't mind. So.
Here he goes.
Veterans Day, as you know, is approaching, and it's coming up on Tuesday on the eleventh of November. So we changed the time this year. It's gonna be one hour earlier. We have the Council on Aging at ten o'clock, with the light refreshments to be served afterwards. We're looking forward to seeing you there, Mr. Mickelson. Thank you. I received your response. So, and also, there is the, you'll be attending the luncheon. Excellent. And I think that's all I have. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew about the Veterans Day event. It's a great event. We have some, we'll have, I think, four classic military vehicles there now. I met someone in town.
Nice.
He's got, he has five classics, a nineteen forty-one Willy. He's got a commander's car. He's got great cars. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot, it's gonna be a great, great event.
So that will be next Tuesday?
Yes, Tuesday, ten o'clock.
Tuesday, November eleventh, ten AM. I'm holding it up in case Pete can get a picture of it. Ten AM at the Council on Aging. All right. Also, if you are a veteran.
Five oh eight, nine one zero, one eight, one eight.
It's Friday.
Again, that's five oh eight, nine one zero, one eight, one eight. Call my office.
Okay, for Matt's office. And the veterans' luncheon is this Friday, November seventh, eleven thirty AM at Rachel's Lakesider. So, big month. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Water Quality Advisory Committee. So in our packet, we have the draft.
Yeah.
And then what was approved.
Correct, yeah. So there was a charge that was previously approved in twenty twenty-three. That's the one that's labeled as final, based on the conversations that I've had with several of the members of the board. There was a desire to expand the scope of the Water Quality Advisory Committee. So our Assistant Town Administrator, Chris Vitale, worked to update that, and that's the draft that you see in your packet.
Okay. So the draft would be on page thirty?
Thirty, thirty-two.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-two.
Yes, yeah.
Thirty-two was the final that we voted on the last time. So the new draft is page thirty.
It says, oh, it says draft on that one.
Yeah, the, the draft is the one before you, the one that's final, was previously adopted by the board.
Is on page thirty, correct?
Thirty is what we're looking at.
Yep.
You can make a motion to approve this new draft?
All right, one, one moment.
So there'll be five at large community members.
I see where there's changes, but I also thank the draft for continuing to include the different watersheds so that we have representation across the entire town.
Right.
So I thank you for that. Right now, we have a motion on the floor.
I know he's, is there a motion on the floor?
Dave.
I make a motion to approve the new draft.
I'll second, I'll second the upgrade. Page thirty and thirty-one.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Mickelson. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So thank you. I'm glad we didn't move this next one, because we would have lost our audience. So next is the lease for the Dartmouth Cultural Center located at four oh four Elm Street.
What lease?
What center?
Finally.
They're naughty.
I should have a whole room full of people here.
All right, tell us a little bit about this.
Yes, so the board had previously approved an RFQ for us to lease the building up to thirty years. We did receive a response from the Cultural Center. We internally reviewed that and rated that as highly advantageous to the community. I think they've held the lease for several years and continue to do an excellent job down there. So this lease would solidify that and their use of the building for the next thirty years through December first of twenty fifty-five.
I'd like to hope that I am here at that time. Not here, but, but I, I don't even know. I can't imagine that I will even know I am. So you will be. You will, for sure.
Sally will be here.
Yes.
Two members already voted for me.
So anyone on the board have a question or comment?
I'd be more than happy to make a motion to approve up to thirty years.
Sure, it is thirty years.
It is thirty.
Yeah.
And all the other added.
Pieces.
Pieces to the lease.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're all gonna be around for the year.
I just want to give the council a minute just to talk about some things that are coming up. I just received an email this afternoon from Mary Lou Frias, so I don't wanna, but if Mary Lou, I could have you come up and just, or anyone, Pauline, someone come up and tell us, because the exciting thing about the Dartmouth Cultural Council is all the events that you, you hold. So tell us what's coming up.
Okay, I can do that. Pauline Santos from Dartmouth Cultural Center. We have two free programs going on this week. Friday night at seven o'clock, we have an author talk about her book. It has won some awards. It's called Blue Collar, and it's about a young girl being raised in New Bedford. So there are a lot of things that you'll recognize when you read this book. It has, we had to put a thing about, it has some abuse in it. So we want people, if they, you know, if they worry about that. And then on Saturday afternoon, we have local poets. I think there are at least, I don't know, five or six, five poets who are going to share their work. They've all published in the area. Some are from Dartmouth, some from Matipoiset and the area. So that should be different and interesting. And then a little later this month, we have a young lady that's going to do wreath making, and she just offered to do it for us, so she only needs to be paid for her materials. So we're looking forward to that. Then, of course, South Coast Artis is our big exhibit. During the Paneraum stroll, we have the building open, and we're working on a coloring book for children using paintings from the different artists that we work with, who will send us a painting, and you put it into software of some kind, and it'll just be the outline of their paintings so that the kids can color it. And then we'll have them bring their coloring to us, and we'll display it for everyone to see.
What a great and unusual idea. That sounds fabulous.
Well, one of our volunteers, our volunteers, believe me, I can't thank them enough. They, they just do it all.
Excellent. And with this thirty-year lease, we have looked before at the renditions of the handicap accessibility of the building, and now we can go forward.
It can happen. It can go forward, yes.
Really important.
And we'll also be able to look for more money, I hope. But also, we're always looking for volunteers, because, you know, people work and then something happens, they can't come anymore. So we always need new volunteers. And we also need some young people that will take over in a while.
To be there in thirty years.
Yes, you gotta. Thank you.
And I know that you have your volunteers, our sitters down at the Cultural Center so that it can remain open.
Yes, yes.
At times, so that people visiting the village can stop in.
Yep, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we're open, you know, from eleven to three. And during the South Coast Artis, they're open until five because, on Saturday and Sunday, because they send some of their artists to cover.
Oh, nice.
Yes, yes.
So thank you for all the work you and your, your team do.
Thank you for supporting us. It's been.
Oh, yes, Mr. Tattlebaum.
I just want to say that I was fortunate enough to be asked to participate, and the reception I got, the people were there, the volunteers, the preparation, it's like, it was awesome. It's a privilege, and I think it's something that people can really appreciate and take advantage of. And I know you're always looking for participants and volunteers, and the more we can talk about it like this, the more people, we can recognize it exists. It's an incredible people, group of people and volunteers. What an asset to our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard they want him to come back as President Taft.
So maybe you can just use a pillow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not like Kennedy or somebody.
No, no. You don't have the face for it.
Well, I don't want them to just be those that were shot either. All right. So we'll continue to sign that and send it down?
Yeah.
All right. Next, in the packet, we have our goals. So I want to thank Cody for putting together, using his goals and putting together our goals, and, and there goes the audience.
That's okay.
Bye.
Place is packed for a while.
The idea of these really was based on the feedback I've gotten from, you know, our individual meetings, from our select board meetings. I tried to encompass what I think, you know, the goals of the board are over the next year or so. So that's really step one. And then step two is aligning my goals with those, which you see, you know, there's some overlap and generally correspond. But this is our first draft. So, you know, the idea tonight really is to dig into these with your assistance and, and review and refine. So I have them up actually on the screen.
Oh.
And if we want to go through and anything we want to change, add, remove, we can certainly do that. And so, you know, for, for the select board goals, the idea is really five categories that are broken down. The first is financial health. The second is long-range planning. Third is economic development. Four is internal operations. And five is communication and transparency. I will note that I did hear from Select Board Member Tattlebaum, and he requested an addition to communication and transparency. So I did add a five point five today, which is to work with UMass Dartmouth leadership to reaffirm the town's commitment to the town gown and coordinate a series of collaborative activities and events. But we can go back to the top and start, start right with.
All right, financial health. To review, just for the folks at home, although they, can I believe see it on their screen, review all operations to ensure efficiency is maximized, expenses are limited to necessary functions of government, operations, and revenues are consistent with best practices within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And you've added the column of who is the lead for responsibility and the timeline. One point two, implementation of, implement the compensation and classification study and negotiate employee contracts that balance competitive compensation with fiscal constraints, including phased benefit enhancements. And that is happening right now.
It is, yeah.
We should be getting, we should get some information by December.
Um, yes. We can provide an update at a future meeting, at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Establish the budget advisory group to work collaboratively with the Select Board, Finance Committee, School Committee, and the Town's Leadership Team. Seems comprehensive. Long-range planning, which we have seen and discussed a lot of this recently. So, goal 2.1, support the Long Range Capital Planning Committee in identifying projects like construction of schools, water and sewer infrastructure, and recreational facilities. Prepare a plan for review and endorsement by the Select Board. And we'll be getting an update, I think, in the future, near future on that. 2.2, work with local and state agencies, examples DEP and EPA, on environmental priorities such as water quality and coastal resilience. Support the Water Quality Advisory Committee to identify and accomplish improved water quality throughout all of Dartmouth. And then 2.3, review and identify specific projects within the master plan and open space and recreation plan that the town should pursue. Ensure that development and projects moving forward are consistent with these strategic plans for the town.
Hi.
Yes, Chris?
Sorry, on long-range planning, I had a note to maybe include something about options for finance, or options for...
Funding?
Preparing, yeah.
Like if we can find grants, is that any option?
There are various ways to actually pay for the items that are included in the plan. You know, maybe prepare a plan for review, including...
In 2.1 you're talking about?
Yeah.
2.1.
Including options available for funding.
You like grants?
Yeah, all elements, yeah, all options for funding.
Well, and I would think that also talks about different borrowing and debt planning.
Yeah, I think everything. I see what you're saying. So I added, prepare a plan for review and endorsement by the Select Board that includes comprehensive funding opportunities.
All right, going down to the third area, which is economic development. Develop an economic development committee/tasks force to be charged with identifying economic development strategies for the town. Review permitting processes and supporting infrastructure that will lead to greater support for new development, and develop a marketing strategy for Dartmouth that highlights its unique attributes.
I think that this... We've heard a lot of messages about this, about finding new revenue streams, and I think this hits the heart of it. And I think it's... You've covered all the angles, and I think that our residents have spoken clearly that they're looking for ways for new revenue streams. Real important.
Our fourth goal, international, international. Internal operations. One, conduct operational studies for key... In key departments, for example, our Public Works, that's the efficiency study that we're doing. Develop a staffing plan, including recruitment for diverse talent and professional development programs. Integrate modern technologies such as AI tools for data analysis, procurement, and meeting minutes. Four, provide training opportunities for boards and committees and staff in areas such as roles and responsibilities, management, budgeting, conflict management, et cetera. And five, explore shared services with the school department in areas like HR and expand on the One Dartmouth approach. All of those, Cody, those are things that we have been talking about, particularly with the training opportunities and making sure people have the tools to do the job that they're doing. So, thank you on that. Anyone else? No, all right. Fifth, communication and transparency. One, host a citizens' academy to better inform our residents of the operations of the town and engage our youth early on. Two, establish streamlined protocols for public record requests. Three, publish an online budget portal with real-time budget information available at all times. And four, host annual community forums and visioning sessions for input on priorities. Cody, I really like those.
I just randomly added five, which was the work with UMass Dartmouth leadership to reaffirm the town's commitment to the town gown and coordinate a series of collaborative activities/events.
Thank you. I like the citizens' academy and the ways that we can educate the public on what's going on. So often, even though we feel that we've talked about it here, we've had meetings, we've, you know, we think we've exhausted all possibilities, and we hear from someone that had no idea this was happening. So, anything more that we can do?
Absolutely, yeah.
Excellent. And we need to leverage their support. We want to be the community they want to live in. We want to know what they... What they need. Any comments?
Yeah.
Dave, go ahead.
Regarding schools, I'm not sure how to word it and where to put it, but what is our responsibility in regard to the, I think, rather sad statistics about how we fund our schools? Where we rank in the state is how we fund our schools, and what is our responsibility to work with the school department and our overall budget to improve that overall ratio and commitment to our schools?
Well, I think in 1.3, establishing the budget advisory group, that was one of the tasks of that group was to...
Agreed. And I... But I think we ought to add some language regarding, more specific to the schools, if my colleagues would agree, because I think that that message, I think, is loud and clear. Certainly was at town meeting, that we need to address those, what I think are pretty miserable statistics. So therefore, can we add language to that in the advisory group? Rather than just look at the... It's a rather... A general message, which is nothing wrong with, but it still doesn't commit us to, you know, addressing the school issue.
So, we could... I think we could expand on 1.3, Dave, based on your feedback, maybe to include a specific goal that myself and Gary will develop a plan to present to the budget advisory group that would elevate the level of funding to the schools or something along those lines? Is that what you're looking for?
What language might be?
I think... I don't think the board wants to make a specific commitment at this point to a level of funding for the schools, but I think if we added that to 1.3, to be specific, that we will invest in that specific...
Addressing the miserable statistics of how we fund our schools, and that's not the language, but...
No. I also don't want the school committee to feel like we are overstepping, so...
But what is our responsibility in that relationship, is what I'm saying.
I was thinking, Dave, where we can insert something like that, but I... In my opinion, I think this really does cover it. You can, you know, enhance it if you like, but, you know, a couple of people on the Finance Committee had reached out to me and a couple of others about a specific plan when it comes to school funding over the long term. And some of the points are really well-taken in the way that they presented it, so... But I think... I still think the budget advisory group is the forum to have them come in and present their ideas and...
Maybe Cody could come back with a language. We don't want to step over the line, but I think we've put something in the language.
Oh, they'd be included in it, yeah. The school department would be included in it.
Yeah, because I think it's also covered in the support the Long Range Capital Planning Committee identifying projects. And even though it says construction of schools and water and sewer infrastructure, I mean, we have some...
That doesn't address the everyday operations of schools.
Right, right. Well, BAG is the one that's supposed... The Budget Advisory Committee is supposed to be that day-to-day annual...
Did you say BAG?
BAG, Budget Advisory Group. That's what it called. Nope, I got that from Gary. So, but I do think, because my concern certainly is funding the school, but we really need to jump on this long-term plan, because I'm looking in the short term that we need to make a decision on moving on these...
The long-range plan?
The long-range plan, so...
I think that's in motion, and I think that's regarding, you know, big-time spending as opposed to... We make no reference in there about everyday spending and how we spend our annual budget in schools.
I realize that, but I also think that that's an impact for big-time spending, because if we were to support the schools to the level...
If we could agree to maybe have Cody come back with some language that we can agree on, does that... Does that make sense to add to it?
I work for the board. It's the board's pleasure.
All right, so...
We don't want to step on their toes.
No, no, I don't. But what is our responsibility up to that point?
What we're saying, yeah. I think our responsibility lies with the Budget Advisory Committee. I think that that's the committee that should be addressing this in many ways. I don't think we should emphasize school spending in any part of our goals, because that just now pigeonholes that to that specific task, and it doesn't address the shortcomings of the DPW. It doesn't address the shortcomings of other departments in town. I think we should just keep it as it's written, because it is part of the charge of the Budget Advisory Committee to look into that. So I don't think we need to be specific about that, and I think we need to be a little bit more, you know, communal-wise. I don't want to say generic, because it's not really generic, but I think we should just... It should be all-encompassing and let the Budget Advisory Committee, you know, delve deeper into that.
I'd like to see if, take one whack at it, maybe Cody can work with Gary and/or Jim to put in an extra sentence in that, to put a little more teeth into it for schools. And if we... If he comes back and we don't agree on it, that'd be fine.
I hear what you're saying, Dave, but I also hear what Sean's saying.
Yeah.
And I do think we have... Every department is looking internally at themselves and saying, what do we need? I mean, and we've heard it from every department we've... That has come to us about the benefit package, you know, when we do the class and comp study, we're going to be looking at where we are against other similar communities. Are we offering an adequate, appropriate salary structure? Or do we have to make moves on that? I mean, I think just running our day-to-day budget, I think we need more money than we have. And we only have... One Dartmouth has one pot of money.
Well, I think...
And to expand it in any means, we're taking it from somewhere else. We don't have any other source.
Well, we have a significant systemic problem is how we fund our schools over and above every other department, in my view. And I think trying to make it a little more specific would be fine, but if we take one whack at the language, maybe Cody will come back and say it's fine as it is. But that's my view.
All right. Well, Cody, I think that that's certainly something that you could have a conversation with Jim, show him these things. Because I know when they did their goals, and they have their school committee goals, I mean, I don't want them to feel that we're overstepping, but I do think that there's work that we can do as a committee in supporting, which BAG will do, and FinCom, as Chris said, he's had members, you know, in contact with him. It's going to be an interesting budget season as we go forth. All right, so we will look at these again, potentially at our next meeting?
Yep. And I would just ask that if any of the members of the board have other feedback or items prior to that meeting, feel free to reach out to me, and we can make adjustments. And I'd like to see these hopefully get adopted at your next meeting.
This is great work.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Cody.
Thank you, Cody.
Say, Madam Chair, Cody's listening. You know, I think they all like... Gary's listening, Chris is definitely listening. They've all had a part in trying to put this thing together, and there are some things on here that are really at the top of my list that I don't need to speak to. They're included, which is great. So, thank you.
And it's the... The first time since I've been on the board that I have seen such comprehensive goals, so I thank you for that. And now, the goals he has given himself.
So these align with the board's goals, obviously. They're broken down into similar categories with financial health, a little bit different when we get into communication and visibility, because these are specific to my role as town administrator and how I will be evaluated by the board going forward. So, there's financial health, there is communication and visibility, and service delivery, and town efficiency. And then within those, again, there's sub-goals that are actionable items. And like I said, a lot of these align specifically with the goals of the board, and then there's also some more specific things in here. So we can run through these, if you'd like, again, too. And the idea on this format is really to review these, you know, at least quarterly, I would like to see. And there, there, there's no surprises on my behalf or on your behalf.
I want to thank you, because this is very similar to the goals that Mr. Tattelbaum and I worked on several years ago. So I thank you for understanding the vision that we had, so thank you. Yes, would you...
Yes, so under communication and visibility, as town administrator, a critical priority is in-person meetings with town departments, members of the community, constituents beyond Dartmouth, and the Select Board. This feedback is then shared among stakeholders in order to foster understanding, transparency, support, and teamwork. And under that, we have several action items. The first is the citizens' academy, which, again, aligns with the board's goal, attending community events and immerse oneself in the community, such as school events, holiday events, et cetera. Host annual community forums and visioning sessions for input on priorities. Again, that one directly aligns with the goals of the board. Attend professional development opportunities and networking events to keep up with best Under next, we have service delivery. The town administrator ensures that resident services... Resident service delivery to be efficient and responsive to the needs of the residents, as well as the efficient functioning of town departments. Action item number one is to integrate modern technology such as AI tools for data analysis, procurement, and meeting minutes. That is directly aligned with one of the board's goals. Provide training opportunities for board and committees and staff in areas such as roles and responsibilities, management, budgeting, conflict management, et cetera. Again, that's another one that is aligned with the board's goals. Publish an online budget portal with real-time budget information available at all times, also aligned with the board's goals. You see that in several communities, open books, things like that. It's something, you know, with the technology that we have, and the amount of residents and community members that we serve, that's something that we should be providing. Under town efficiency, town administrator develops structures and delineation of responsibilities of departments to maximize efficiencies and accountability within staff and departments. Conduct operational studies for key departments such as Public Works. Explore shared services with the school department in areas like HR and expand on the One Dartmouth approach. Develop a staffing plan, including recruitment for diverse talent and professional development programs.
Beautiful.
Great job.
Yeah, Cody, this is... The one thing I'm going to put in for the Select Board goals is I'm going to take the work of the school committee where they had that opening statement on One Dartmouth.
A mission.
They offered us that mission statement, and then put something in for Select Board, so that would be my addition.
On that, a while, if that made any...
This is excellent, Cody. And the information thus far from other departments working with you is a breath of fresh air, and your communication and visibility is appreciated by all of those departments, because the fact that you've left the office and gone out to see them in their space also allows you to see what they need.
Right.
And what's going on in their day-to-day lives, and that has made a huge impact. So, it was something that we were lacking, and I thank you for doing that, and I thank you for putting... For taking this charge and working through it with your team. So, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll put this on for the next meeting as well, for final approval. And I would say the same thing, if there's anything in particular that the board wants to see added to my goals for the first year, please let me know, we can do that. I envision this really as we expand on these as time goes on. I mean, I've only been here three months, but I think I have a good idea of what we're looking to accomplish. And hopefully, next year, as we review these goals and expand, we can really expand these beyond goals to what I'd like to see the board have as a full strategic plan, similar to what the school, you know, the school department has put together.
Excellent.
Would it be helpful to have maybe some kind of a six-month review, either with a couple individuals or formal just...
I'd like to review these quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah, I think we put it on a meeting quarterly with the full board, and that way there, you know, because different things come up naturally when we review these, and you conduct my evaluation. Some of these will not have been done, but other things will have been done that have popped up. So, I think as long as we're all on the same page, review them quarterly, and I think, you know, the board knows how I operate at any time, if anyone wants to meet or discuss anything, that's, that's ideal.
Excellent. Thank you.
Excellent.
All right. Next is our town administrator's update.
Yes, so I want to share, while I'm sharing, I want to share some images. So, let me start here. So, we conducted, we had a Halloween party in town, so I wanted to share a couple of pictures. Very well-attended, I'd say we had, gosh, somewhere in the range of 50 to 75 employees attend our Halloween party, which was held on Thursday. What was really a breath of fresh air was seeing the engagement among all of our buildings and our staff, not just from here at Town Hall. So you can kind of see the bottom picture where there's a group of staff. The top left is our office, myself, Kenzie, Melanie, and Chris. And then the top right is the Parks and Facilities Department, which won our door decorating contest, which I'll get to next.
You're a little psycho.
Yeah. These are just a few of the doors, so for the public that isn't aware, if you haven't been in Town Hall or weren't in the couple of weeks leading up to Halloween, or any town facility, I should say, we did a door decorating contest. Again, I was very pleasantly surprised at, we had over 25 submissions into this from different departments, and we had engagement from every single government building within town. So we had submissions from the COA, we had submissions from both libraries, the police department, DPW, obviously here at Town Hall. So, these are a few. The top left is the Building Department, which was one of the winners, and then you see some, just-
The OSHA recordable on that one, got me.
Yeah. And then just some really, you know, unique, out-of-the-box thinking. The top right is one of the police department submissions. You have loitering, Lavec, obviously referring to the chief with some, you know, funny language there. Down at the bottom left, you have the North Branch Library, which didn't really have a door that they could, so they got creative and used one of their bookcases and went with the book theme. And then the bottom right, you have the COA. But like I said, there was, there were 25 submissions, so just to show the public that we do have fun here sometimes.
I will say, just going through the halls, I attended a number of different meetings last week, and the folks that were coming in and out of their doors just were having such fun with it, so that was great.
It was very fun. And then last, but not least, I'll share, this morning at our department head meeting, we did a CPR training, CPR, first aid, a lock zone. So I want to thank Stat Ambulance, who came in, out, and provided the training at no cost to the town. But just a couple of images here, the staff were really engaged in, you know, not a full certification program, but the idea is just a reminder, you know, where these are life skills, whether you're out in the public.
That's another dud.
So, good things to, good skills for our staff. We're actually going to expand it and schedule a training that we're going to open up to all town staff and with the option for them to come. Beyond that, we are just working, we've been working with the reclass, getting some data, preliminary data with that. We can provide an update at the next board meeting, continuing to work with our HR team to recruit and retain our staff.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have the proposed town projects, and you should have received an e, a separate email. And highlighted on that is sort of the latest one, which is at 411 Cross Road, the new gas station convenience store. That's in the former, I think it was Roses.
Yeah, Rose Motors.
Motors.
This is, yeah, 411-
So that has a ZBA, a ZBA hearing this week.
Yes. And then there's one new project under multifamily housing, which is 802 through 808 State Road, proposed 56-unit multifamily development. That is also before the ZBA.
That's market rate, right?
Yes, that is market rate. The middle one.
Yeah.
So what are they doing at that, what is it, A3D?
Which, are you on commercial?
610 State Road, third from the bottom.
Yeah. A3D slash 610 State Road. So, isn't that a designer? Is that what he's doing?
It's completed.
Putting it on a second story?
Let me get the exact. Let's see. CBV 2314.
It says that one's completed.
Yeah, that was a project that we had had on there, but let me get you the exact.
So 413, that's that old Viking building, the salon and apartments, that one's done?
It's on the second floor, interior design. You have animal, animal, bed.
Oh, okay.
Oh, right, right.
That's the 610.
They put a second floor.
They put a second floor on, right, correct, right. But that's all done?
Yeah, that, that is all done.
Okay. Have you seen that?
No.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing that forward, Cody.
Yeah, no problem. You know, I will note that you may hear of things, but we only will include things that actually have submittals. We just, we don't want to, you know, if there's rumors or, you know, so, but as soon as there's submittals before a certain planning board, it'll be on this list.
Still in progress, Stone Edge. You've seen the data where, how many, was he talking?
No, just the one.
Oh, one?
Yeah.
One unit?
No? All right. Old Business, anything to report?
I have no new updates on any of those.
Okay, let's look at the minutes of October 20th. I reviewed them and found them to be accurate.
Motion to accept minutes. Second, October 20th, 2025.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. O'Neill. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those pass. Next, select board updates. Mr. O'Neill, did you have anything?
I've just got a request to, for us to maybe get on the agenda. The legal update again, haven't done that in a while, I think since last, maybe June or July, and, and the update on, from the PFAS attorney, that payment should have been released about a month, two months ago, so we need to find out what's going on there. Water Department might be able to use that money.
Okay. Mr. McDonald?
I'm good.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yep, just to, I'll be at the COA this coming week and Rachel's for the veterans.
And you'll be giving the words on behalf of the select board?
The select board to the, for the town.
So thank you very much for doing that.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Mr. Tattelbaum?
I'd like to just thank the, acknowledge the school committee. I was, I was, I was before them last week. Luckily, it was, it was an off week for us. I represented, not this board, of course, but my role at Gifts to Give, and we're in the planning process, because the Gifts to Give is in desperate need of kids' clothes for the 14. And we're going to be having a clothes drive at each school, all three elementaries, and the middle school with a Gifts to Give trailer there and pick it up over the next four to five weeks. And the cooperation I got from the school committee to do this, exceptional, and moving down to the, to the principals of each school, and we'll be announcing that as we go forward with the schedule itself, but the school committee was gracious, and we hope to, hope to load it up and get as many possible clothes as we can, because we are in desperate need to fill orders at Gifts to Give.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my update includes the following. The Dartmouth High School teams that have made the playoffs, volleyball, we'd like to congratulate them, they did make the playoffs. Unfortunately, they have been eliminated. Girls, field hockey is waiting to hear who they will play next. The team is there, the potential opponents are playing tonight. Tomorrow, Dartmouth Boys Soccer will be playing at 6:00 PM here at Dartmouth High School Stadium, and they will be hosting Marshfield. And the football team will be playing Friday night in Burlington, Mass., which is a bit of a hike, but we send them well wishes as they go into tournament. And remember on Thanksgiving Day, that the 11, at 10:00 AM, they will have their traditional Thanksgiving game here at Dartmouth Stadium against Fairhaven. Some sad news, I just want to recognize the passing of some notable figures in our town. Theodore "Ted" Small, before joining DHS, he had a storied military career, and he became the high school principal until his retirement in 1986. Arthur Bennett was a DHS-educated, beloved English teacher, better known as our Captain Ahab, as he was known best in downtown New Beaufort. He and his wife Jean were named Man and Woman of the Year for their work in bringing the national park to New Beaufort. And Margaret Alves, a longtime educator, retired from fourth grade at Cushman School, and in her retirement became a drug rehab counselor and devoted time to jail ministry. So, some great icons of the school department. And following up, I just want to let everyone know that we have published in almost every spot we can about those members of our community who have been impacted by the most recent government shutdown and SNAP benefits. The school department is also going to be doing food, food, non-perishable item drives to support our food pantry located at the Council on Aging. Anyone who's interested in doing that, you can drop things off at the Council on Aging, including gift cards in any denomination to any of the markets in the local area that folks may be able to use. And I thank everyone who is stepping out of their comfort zone and getting involved in, in all of these efforts, so thank you.
I forgot to mention one thing, if you don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to give credit to DPW and the Building Department, who went out last week and removed several signs throughout town.
There's still a few out there.
They are, but, yeah, they worked hard. We also are drafting notices that we're going to send out to some of these habitual offenders, reminding of the $300 violation per sign, per day.
Right.
The last, kind of a last reminder, and then we will work with our Building Commissioner to begin serious enforcement of those violations.
No negotiations.
We can deliver the fine.
And I have one final sad thought. We, over the weekend, we lost a Dartmouth High School student tragically in a car accident. My thoughts go out to that family and friends and our community. We do all we can as parents, and in a blink of an eye, things change. And I want to wish that family healing and a support of our community. Thank you.
Amen.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Mickelson, seconded by Mr. McDonald. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.